I'll be in a second. I'll call the Council of Borough Council meeting to orders. We will have the presentation followed by a roll call.
President Miller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ives?
Yes.
Councilman Garry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Elizabeth Cassidy?
Yes.
And Mayor Valtke?
Yes.
Keith Meyer?
Yes.
Kate Metz?
Yes.
Ian T. Wardle?
Yes.
Mayor Druszkowski?
Yes.
We have one.
Moving on, I have an announcement that council held an executive session on Monday, June 6th, on a matter of personnel with no action. Council will also adjourn this evening after the committee session to a matter of personnel with no action. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or the regular? Hearing none. Are there any amendments or changes to the proposed amendments? We do have one that the executive session that was announced at that meeting for the personnel committee, it should say it was an executive session of the personnel committee was held on May 20th on a matter of personnel with no action. It just says that it was a committee, you know, personnel committee met on the 20th. It should play, there was an amendment. So that's the only change. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Mr. Anthony Reed, is he here a second?
I'm second.
Mr. Jared is in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The agenda is approved. Moving on to citizens' comments. And should we have some guests tonight? Just want to remind everyone that your comment is welcome, but comments are limited to three minutes in order to keep the meeting moving and to give everybody a chance to speak. And you have the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. So there's three minutes at the beginning and three minutes at the end. Open it up to anybody that wants to speak. Mr. Reed?
Thank you. To me, I brush my lips, make sure I cover everything. I've spoken to this group before, but there's several new members of the council, so you may not have heard my comments before. So I've been a resident, I'm a family for 26 years in Mechanicsburg, 17 of them on Simpson Street and the last nine on Market Street. This is a great place to live. Streets are great, climate is well, businesses are wonderful here, but the traffic issues continue to be the worst traitor of this town. The speed limit of 25 is ignored and rarely enforced, and it's not just passenger vehicles, larger, more dangerous vehicles also bound through our town, dump trucks, gas tankers, and so on. And if you knew how fast your kids' school buses were traveling down Market Street, you'd be concerned. Meanwhile, dozens of oversized tractors each day, they're border signs at every point of entry in our town and every major street corner to create dangerous situations on our roads. And crashes, not accidents, crashes are frequent. The Mechanicsburg Police website lists all the calls that they respond to and traffic incidents top the list. We live near the corner of South Market and Marble Street, and according to the Mechanicsburg Police website, there have been nine crashes in this corner in the past two years, but there have been three more not yet reported on the website, making 12 in total during this time period. Most of our medical assistance can provide those vehicles to be towed due to the amount of damage. And if anybody is speaking at the high school, only one driver out of the 24 drivers were a minor out of that group, so it was not the high school students. I reached out to the past, to this council, to the police department, to our state representatives, show of leisure. All interactions were respectful, and some enforcement activity did occur for a while, but it faded. Leaders cite the fact that Market Street is a state road and therefore PennDOT's responsibility. Meanwhile, and not surprisingly, a representative from PennDOT had informally commented on the responding situation, stating that the nature of many of these problems make it the borough's responsibility. I acquired a bunch of grants from PennDOT to address traffic issues, and I was informed that those ones are usually reserved for their locations where there are fatalities. Is that what we were waiting for?
Aye.
People in Mechanicsburg are starting to take matters into their own hands. Residents are putting up signs along Market and Marble Streets warning drivers to slow down, but frankly, if you need to put up signs to slow traffic, the roads are fully designed. I'm frankly tired of the hand wringing and the response that there's not much we can do. Yes, the borough has many residents who are under the jurisdiction of PennDOT, but I don't live in PennDOT. I live in Mechanicsburg, but I believe all of you do too. Why are they all okay with this? I really want something to be done. I'm just one person here, but there are hundreds of others who feel the same way. Many have thrown up their hands and say, well, nothing can be done, it's been this way for 20 years, 30 years, and longer. I will not accept that. I want to be a part of the solution. I'm not passionate about to say you do it, I want to help do it. And frankly, if action's not taking, I will start taking action myself, and the media is my next call. Thank you.
Michael Mota, 505 South Market Street.
Okay, thank you. And would you like that included in the minutes directly?
Yes, please.
Uh, may I have it?
You may.
Thank you. My rating's on video, passion.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? Stern?
My name is Mark Stern, I live at 88 North Frederick Street. It's something I haven't said on the agenda for tonight, but it's been that pick in this long for this council inside on Suits Street and Suits', a schedule. Why didn't they give you guys the information back in November of last year? And if I remember right, President Miller, you said hold off until after the new council has been seated. This is six months ago. Why are they taking six months for something that needs to be done? I took two months off. I met residents, they're very, very upset with you guys right now. They're very upset. They're after what is going on with council. Their thing is that the freeway circus and the council's running it. That's what they're saying. Also, why are they back in, uh, the borough manager's been doing his job, you guys have hard times him to approve, he can't do nothing. He gave you guys all the information about the slides. To me, that, the lady on should be fighting for those slides at the pool. She's not fighting for it, she's not doing anything. He gave you all the information. John Andrew, you turned him down. Bob, you turned him down. Oh, let's get Mel Torekis. How many other Torekis have you gotten? Zero. He's had a good place. They would be done by now, but no, 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 no. Now they're back to slow run. This is uncalled for. I've been in this team for eight years. I would never settle for this. Why are you guys standing for this? Well, the house reason for all poor leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Anyone else? Yes, Chris.
So I haven't done this before, so bear with me, there's a stumble over my words. Um, I am care of harm. I own the property at 415 South Market Street and the automotive. I'm basically here for the same reason as Mr. Burke, um, because there's just been too many accidents that are in, at our intersection. Um, first, I think we need to acknowledge that it is a direct route to the high school for walkers and drivers, you know, young people, old people, dropping their kids off or whatever. Whoever it is, it's adults who are in a hurry as well as kids that are in a hurry. Um, but there is a concern for walkers, because people don't stop at the girls' walk, because I think the crosswalk's pretty worn out, so that might be an issue. Um, the area in front of the building, or the apartment building to the right of us, there used to be a no parking sign there, and it used to be a yellow curb. I have pictures that show some of the yellow paint still there. Um, I think that's a simple thing to fix, because that could be part of the issue with people not being able to see, uh, North Market Street. Um, there was a comment made on one of our Nextdoor posts about this issue, um, that the accidents really, the accident numbers are very low compared to the number of vehicles that pass through the intersection. Again, I sit in my office all day long, and I hear brakes squeal, I hear tires squeal, because somebody has to brake so they don't hit somebody that pulled out, or vice versa. It's not just the number of accidents, it's all the almost accidents, and again, high school kids are crossing the street, and they have their ear caught, their phones, things on, and they, um, you know, they're down to phone, they don't pay attention, seriously. I've seen them just walk out into the intersection. Um, we have cameras on this intersection, and we've watched the actions repeatedly. People on Market Street are driving way too fast, they're not paying attention, people on Marble, Marble look quickly both ways, because they just want to get across. So it's both directions that are an issue, but the people, the speeding on Market Street is just ridiculous. Um, we've offered the video to the police every time there's an accident, we go out and make sure people are okay, and, you know, sometimes we stay with the people until somebody gets there, something. Um, so we've offered the video to the police, and only one time, and all of these accidents, has, has anybody come and looked to see who's at fault. I don't quite understand that. Um, we are willing, as the business where all of this seems to be occurring, we are willing to offer a reserved spot on our parking lot, so that you can park a police car there, manned or unmanned, to just get people's attention to slow things down. Um, we have put up on our sign out there, "Please slow down, drive 25." Again, we're trying to do what we can do. Our cars, we have a rule for all of our employees, that we park our cars only up so far, because we use that part of the parking lot for our vehicles, but we don't put our cars up so far that they can't see around them. We're very careful about that. Um, and again, as a business owner in the corner of Market and Marble, we are not necessarily in favor of a four-way stop or a light, because all that's going to do is make it harder for us to get out of a parking lot, harder for our customers to get in the parking lot. That's really, we're not looking for something like that. Personally, I'm not looking for something like that. Just me and company to slow the traffic down. Um, what do I have here? I did contact the Department of Transportation on February 6th, when there were three accidents in one week, um, and I, and I can't get a hold of anybody. Nobody gets, nobody calls me back, nobody responded to the email. Um, the start and end of the school day is much worse. A four-way stop, according to the, like, all of these conversations we had on Nextdoor, everybody seems to be in favor of a four-way stop. I, and I can provide you with all of that feedback. Um, and most of the accidents seem to be coming from west to east, sort of crossing, like, coming from the high school over and then to our side of the street. That just seems to be what I'm seeing, that's what I'm seeing, so.
That's all I have.
Would you like my information?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's what I'm hoping?
Sure.
Um, took all this time. Isn't it good on a beam? Maybe this would, like, slow people down?
Yes.
Maybe if they realize that they're room 28, or 45, or 50, and 25, that would slow them down?
I, I will offer electric at our house if you need to pay for a lot, I mean, they still plug it in at our house if they need it. No, no.
Any other comments?
Hello, Keith Thomas, 423 South Frederick Street, Mechanicsburg. I was planning to speak tonight, but I just want to reinforce what our neighbors are saying. I live close to the intersection of Frederick and Marble, which is like halfway from the two stop signs, and I swear there are some people that are trying to reach 80 miles an hour on Marble Street, especially the young motorcyclists. I really am concerned that someday, somebody's going to pull out on a side street and knock out one of these, who's never a cyclist, but, but speed is the main issue. I love my dog all over my neighborhood, and on Marbles, on, on Market Street, people are driving, plus the speed limit as they come in through this intersection sometimes. It, it really has become a problem. Uh, I've noticed employees are in the auto, coming out and directing traffic right after an accident, you know, putting themselves in harm's way, trying to, trying to help somebody who's just had an accident. So I just want to just reinforce that people are driving way too fast in our town. Truck problems, yeah, we all, we all know about that as well, and I see it from my intersection as well, but thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a comment? Anyone else? Hearing none, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
How much?
Councilwoman Martin makes some motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Buick seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items on the consent agenda are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda, action items.
Action to approve PPL LED streetlight diversion agreement in Resolution 142022.
Chair of motion. So. Vice President Anthony Reed, is he here a second?
Second.
Councilman Buick seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Action to adopt ordinance 1177 debt ordinance in accordance with Section 80 of 3 of the Debt Act.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote. Uh, I will ask for a motion. Aloud. Vice President Anthony Reed makes a motion, is he here a second?
Second.
Councilman Buick seconds. Any discussion?
Good evening. I'm here from PSM. My name is Melissa Hughes. We're the borough's financial advisor, and we conducted an RFP process to solicit bids from local and regional banks, um, for this loan, which is going to be in the approximate amount of $1,453,000 for some dating projects. I have put in front of you a copy of your proposal, of the packet, and I just want to focus for a minute on the summary page. It looks like this. And just want to really emphasize for the borough and for the residents who are here, what excellent competition there was. You got proposals from ten banks, which met with all the local and regional lenders, um, looked at the borough very favorably. That's a really high level of competition. Ultimately, the low-cost provider was Webster Bank. Um, they're one of those regional banks that are pretty active in Pennsylvania, um, and they operated 2.83% fixed rate through maturity, and that will have a call feature, so it is callable, meaning you can refinance for debt service savings after December 15th of 2026. That is, is a pretty favorable term and would be comparable to what you could get in the bond market. Um, the kind of only other thing I'd point out is that overall, this portion of debt is structured so that in two years, you're going to have a debt drop-off, meaning you're keeping you level until you're being fully thinking about how this piece of debt fits into the borough's overall debt portfolio, and not kind of tying your hands behind your back for, you know, any future needs to be managed. Happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions?
The fact that we have none speaks to how well you've prepared us. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you all.
Hi, I'm Steve Kingless. I'm Attorney with Meddies Evans in the South Side of Harrisburg. Proud borough resident and proud to serve as your bond council. Thanks for the opportunity. Uh, as bond council, we draft all the legal documents for the loan, including the ordinance for tonight, reviewed by your solicitor. Uh, we advertised proposed enactment of a debt ordinance in the Sentinel that appeared last Friday. Um, so the ordinance says before you, I'll summarize, there's a lot in there, it's a lot of requirements under the Debt Act, the statute that governs municipal borrowing in Pennsylvania, but essentially, um, by enacting the ordinance, council would be accepting the Webster proposal, Webster Bank proposal, uh, that was submitted, and authorizing all sets needed to proceed to close the loan. There is some paperwork that had to be prepared, that will, will get signed, assuming this is enacted, we have to submit the DCD for approval, that takes 16 to 20 days. So there's a lot of moving parts behind the scenes that obviously are already set in motion, and then we'll get you two a closing, uh, roughly a month from now, um, so that you can have the money to start on those projects. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the process and the ordinance that's before you.
Any questions for Attorney Reed?
I'd like to get a poll.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll call.
Councilwoman Ives?
Yes.
And President Anthony?
Yes.
Councilman Garry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes.
Councilman O'Neil?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Thank you. Motion passed. That concludes the regular agenda and the regular council meeting. We now move into committees. Finance administration ordinance. Vice President Anthony.
Thank you again to PSM for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
So four items on our agenda are first being the treasury. We have this on our agenda just in case the finance committee has any comments, thoughts, concerns, or anything they want to talk about with the treasury report. Uh, Councilmen Buick and Miller are on the finance committee's list, and any thoughts or comments from you first?
I have none.
No? Maybe the other council representatives?
Hearing none, move on. See on the 2021 borough budget report.
Have you received anything from Hamilton-Mutter? All right, I have neither.
I haven't checked my mailbox yet, but.
Yeah, I haven't heard any from them, so I'll reach out to them tomorrow and find out what's going on, but they should be sending an executive letter to you at your, your home address, so, and I haven't done it yet. Okay.
So I think that's, see that in the next two weeks, is there a reason we shouldn't have that, right?
Uh, it took until August of 2020 to get to 2019. So, and that was with Trout, which is a much larger, or, or, larger firm, so, um, there is, everybody dealing with COVID money and COVID this and COVID that, just making things longer. Uh, we did have our liquid fuel audit, and that went through really quick, because nobody's working in the state, they're all working from home, so he enjoyed coming here and actually talking to people. But, uh, yeah, that was, that went through fine, but this is, this is where we've seen it for the last two and a half years.
Okay. Uh, update on government expenditure plan.
Uh, Mr. O'Neil and I met, we discussed some of the AV spazzage, or AV, what we're looking at for in the office, in the, the room here. Uh, we're going to get together and discuss a little more in detail what we're looking at there, but as far as that goes, um, that's kind of where we're sitting right now, is waiting on, on a few information to come in and see where it's going to come out.
So on the, on the plan that you had, I think you revised your plan a little point since, like, it was based on our request. On that plan, uh, at the bottom, if I remember correctly, there was about a third of it that was allocated, about two-thirds of it that was kind of out there for things that may come up.
Yeah, and what we did is, we took the advice of Zelenkovsky and Axelrod, and we paid payroll, which is what was allowed to be done under one of the rules from the treasury. Um, so that money is sitting right now in basically the general account, waiting for allocation to different places. There were allocated funds to, uh, not to the authority, but to Panone, to do the, the infrastructure survey and all of that stuff, along with getting, um, the iPads and a few things, so that stuff has been taken care of. Um, we're kind of sitting, waiting on what the next step was. The next one that we knew that we wanted to do was the AV system here in the, in the council chambers. Uh, there was talk of emergency radios and a few other things. Uh, some of those things have been thrown up in the air, and that actually come up today in a county meeting that I was in, uh, where they want to see what we're going to do with, what we would like to see. The total count of radios that we're going to have to purchase, uh, and then what that's submitted to the county to see what they can help us with, so.
Okay. Um, I think we also discussed using some of that, those funds as matching funds for grant, for this?
Correct.
Like the Walkworks grant, should that, should we be awarded that for the active transportation, so?
And now that that has been, we recorded it as we used it to recover payroll that we lost during COVID, all right, which, anyway, it was done that way. We're kind of out of the rules for the treasury right now with that money, so we can, we don't have to spend it by 2024 like all the others, like the, the funds that will come in two weeks, we should get another $400,000. So that's where we'll still be under that until next March, when we have to report that. Uh, and I'm pretty sure Zelenkovsky will say the same thing as they did this time, um, use it to greenberg payroll, and then you can put it in the general fund and use it as you see fit, so. But there are a few things that we were, we had looked at, um, the radios for the police and the fire department, um, the AV system in here, a few upgrades to the cloud system, the website, and a few other things that we were looking at needing that money for, so.
So I'm a bit of a planner, because of what I do. So would you mind if I popped into the office, maybe we talked about certain things that were happening, maybe we dynamized a few, if there was that much money sitting, maybe we've got some immediate things we can take care of, and then leave some of it in reserve for, and maybe come back with a plan, uh, for something?
Yep.
Unless you sense we have so much out there right now. Any other comments from the council? Okay, sure. Thank you, Roger. Uh, update on Cumberland County recovery grant application.
You guys spoke to, we spoke about this last meeting. Uh, the direction from council was to wanted to address the Broad, George, and Keller Street, um, issue that we had up there, try to get that project done, that is probably the closest one, and Greg, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but the closest one we had to shovel ready, uh, that we could use, we had the most data, background for it, plus we collaborated with the school district to prep the school district properties for us to attach to their system and try to get those people up there on those streets and leave. So I'm going to turn it over to Greg, because I kind of, the day after you guys told me, give me that direction, I sent Greg an email and said, "Go for it."
Yeah, so I actually got the opportunity to talk to Cook, who's with the county planning commission, he's our representative, which happens to be, uh, just for your sense of, you know, you say they're eligible, but the reality is really eligible, you know what I mean, or what are the chances of being eligible? He did actually feel that given utility issues and long-term utility issues were ranked rather high in terms of what the conversation's been at the county level with the commission. So I think it's a good project, you know, we have lots and lots of, of history there. Uh, we can clearly show a couple of pictures, like, you know, what the condition is, that's, you know, gives a little bit of a wow factor, so I, I think we, we shoot for, you know, shoot for what we can get. The big question, of course, is what do we ask for, you know, obviously, in terms of grant funding, typically, you know, you ask for 95 cents, and then you're only going to put five down, you know, you're less likely to get, you know, the big chunk of money that you're going to ask for half of there or something like that, so. Um, currently, we seem to think that there was necessarily a sweet spot in terms of, you know, the ask, uh, you know, we obviously, we can spend a million dollars there very easily, so, um, you know, I think some discussion about what we feel like we should, should ask for is prudent, you know, in terms of that. You know, I'm not really a fan of 50/50, uh, you know, like, hey, it shows a little bit of, of, uh, you know, the game on the borough side, you know what I mean, in terms of that. You know, there, there's obviously a lot of money out there in terms of the county, but they're not going to give it all to us, clearly, you know, they're going to spread it around, so, you know, that, that, in this case, feels like it's a good number to me, but you never know, you certainly have opportunities to ask for more. And, you know, once you start getting into asking for more, you know, you really have the opportunity to potentially do a little horse trading and negotiating with the commissioners, obviously, when it comes down to the award, um, and things like that, so it's, it's the game we play. So I'm, I'm looking for, you know, suggestions in terms of, of that, that, that split.
Historically, what gets approved, what has a higher probability of approval?
Well, again, I think something in that 50/50 rate is, is, has a much higher, uh, historically. You get that, I'm saying across all grants. Of course, this is a brand-new program, so we really have no, no historical data compared to record against this one, but.
Both of the commissioners.
Yeah.
Is real, so if, I guess, I'm sorry, I was going to rephrase, I'm not sure if that was clear. So historically, with other grants, with these decision makers, where are you seeing that sweet spot?
I don't know specifically with the commissioner, but I'm not aware of what that is.
And if I may, that, that is often a more of a political question than a tactical question, so in, in this case, if it's a, a project where we might be able to leverage,
So in, in this case, if it's a, a project where we might be able to leverage, um, some political clout with the school board and, um, because it'll have a direct impact on the school district, um, as well as the borough, and then also leveraging the money that, that Borough was borrowing to help, um, fund that project. I think pulling that all together, I think, put together and, and, and again, leveraging that, the political, um, connections with the school board can go a long way. Thank you.
There is stormwater components to this where I think that a cooperative effort between us, the authority, the borough, the authority, and the school district would also play very well on that situation. Um, the authority does have some money put aside, and I think that's where, um, we need to, Greg and I need to sit down, get some hard numbers, um, and then approach the authority about maybe helping out this, this sheriff or two. So, and like, you know, Councilman Anthony spoke to a minute ago, we do have some funds set aside. Not enough to cover, I think, 50% of the cost of this project, but, uh, given that we would be handling the paving and potentially sewer and having the authority handle the stormwater side, I think it's a good, it's a good three-way split.
Do you have what you need from us to move forward, or what values do you need from this council?
Can you go with the 50/50?
The 50/50, of course. I think if we got a better shot than not to get more money, I think it makes sense. We just have to make sure the math works.
And, and I do think too, you know, as Roger mentioned, we already have some of this allocated, so I think that goes a long way with, with the commissioners. It's not like we're like, okay, we're gonna combine 500 grand, you know. I think we have 300 in the budget for the authority, given, you know, we got a big chunk of it here, we probably pull some other sources. It's, it's, as some raise it's gonna kind of be at this point, and we have a funding somewhat in hand. Um, you know, I think that goes a long, long way to say, we're gonna get it done and not just, you know, kind of take it and plan on, plan around it for the next 10 years, you know, something like that.
Well, we're in a great position, but so are many other municipalities who may be into the same position to get to that. So we want to put our, our best foot forward.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Are you thinking of 50% between Borough Authority and 50% between the grants?
I was thinking 50% coming from the county and then the other 50% would be split up between various entities that would have, you know, some model of this kind of thing.
The school district being one of those as well? Sounds okay? Other thoughts?
This grant, again, is a relatively civil one, you know, which is good and bad, of course, um, but at the same time, you know, as, as Mike indicated, you know, with political discussion is certainly appropriate in this case.
So what's the deadline for the grant application?
It was moved to July, it's July 1st.
Yeah, July 1st. Any issues with that? Or, what, June 6th?
Yeah, no, that's, that's not a problem.
Do you see any conflicts, you know, in your conversations with the commissioners and do you see any conflicts with other Borough entities applying for grants?
Well, we call it conflict, but it's, it's, you go to a good point, you know, that, and I'll, I'll use the radios as an example. There's been discussion about possibly trying to do a more broader county-wide type project, you know, or something like that, um, in terms of that particular issue. And he, that, he could bring that up specifically, so, um, I don't really believe we're doing indirect conflict with it, but I think we should probably ask for it, um...
Because there's certainly sort of silos.
Right, yeah, yeah, you gotta believe we're not gonna get all, all the utility or got out of everything, so it gives us a greater opportunity to be funded in some form across multiple areas, so.
That would be an idea.
Yeah.
That appears to be all. Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to public works from Shaky, Councilman Booker was not here, so, uh, can I volunteer either? Ron, Councilman O'Neill, or Councilman, you're, you're both on that committee, would you like to run that?
Um, sure. Um, so I think we got a report from Suma Zakiwi and, um, Dusso. Are they in a meeting today, if I'm mistaken?
They're at Congress.
At Congress. Okay, so we have part of the CBA report. President Ogaski, do you have a report?
Oh, I do, um, I have some discussion related to the capital improvements project. I'm gonna hijack the screen right there if I may.
Go for it.
So, as we previously discussed, you know, the intent with, with kind of this first round of funding was to try to, to fix off all the worst of the worst, so, um, flashing back to the rabies survey we've done, we, we picked out the, what was the red areas of that particular survey, and then started to look at those areas in particular, just to kind of drilling down even, even more in a refined manner for what, what areas we could patch and pave and do things like that. So we ended up with, these represent 32 kind of discrete areas. Um, just because of line does not mean that that street's gonna be paved, you know, curb to curb, city areas work essentially. Um, and depending on, on, if you took all of those 33, we were right around 1.5 million dollars in a, in a great world that, you know, asphalt prices actually come down, um, in the near future versus a world where, you know, we'll probably be able to do maybe about 75% of these areas, you know, if they kind of stick around to where they're at currently. Um, but those areas have been identified, quantified, we've applied legally, being to the most reasonable estimate at this point in time, which I wouldn't even hang my hat on frankly, because of what's going on in the, in the oil world. Um, but, um, we have this, this list essentially available to us to start from. You know, what we proposed ultimately would be typically the bid is what we call unit price, you know, so we'll be able to kind of identify each of these areas, you know, see what the bids come back as, and then be able to carve off areas or add areas depending on, who did we, or we think we could actually do. Um, you know, to carve off or add depending on how those, those prices come in. The bad news is this. So you can see the two red highlighted boxes, uh, one represents the asphalt index in June of 2021, the one represents the asphalt index in June of 2022, which is today, they have, they have risen by 50%, okay? It's the highest it's ever been, um, and right now, frankly, is not the time to pave anything. So as we sit here again, I got the eye already, um, you know, we're positioned to, to gamble a little bit, frankly. Um, you know, do we wait it out and see what happens with the index? I, I cannot imagine it doesn't come down a little bit, but I, you know, who knows in this world? Um, and we're also obviously wrapping up against the end of the paving season already in terms of procurement. Um, I know that's not what anybody wants to hear, but my ultimate recommendation, I think, is gonna be that we, we bid this in December of this year for an early start next year. That gives us some chance of hopefully benefiting from a change in the asphalt index. It also, you know, people are most hungry in terms of contract fulfillment over the winter before the, the new season comes out. Um, and that's kind of where we, we stand, so. But I serve with the direction of council, therefore, would love to use, uh, to make the all uses.
How do we determine, uh, critical repairs, or are we, we still responding to those? And how, how do we determine what's critical?
Well, what we did, what we did, we took that, that survey that enveloped the entire borough and just totally looked at the worst areas for start and, and then went out and made a judgment call, further broke those worst areas out into three different categories, like a high, medium, and low, um, and then shuffled them all up. So, you know, there's a lot of, of just, hey, this is what I picked kind of situation, frankly, you know what I mean? This is our, our opinion on what those worst areas are. But also areas that are big enough that would be, you know, we're, we're somebody who can fix it. We want it to be big enough that it's worth fixing, not, not, not little pockets, you know, we're not talking about those kind of areas. Like bigger areas that would be, be passed. And while we get it, it's really intended to be a pass to hold things together, it's not, you know, in, in some of the areas, we won't be paving perfect, or it makes sense or something like that, but the vast majority of them are, are fixes, so.
So my question, I thought was going to be, if we, yeah, well, user crystal ball, so we wait till next year, what is the likelihood that the expansion of that will need more because the roads are starting to get worse?
I don't think that it would, in that eight-month period, you know, whatever it is, it would be drastically worse than it already is. So we've reached a level with a little more time when it comes to falling.
Couple of good questions. When is the price want bid, the time of bid or the time of work performance?
Great question. So what happened with the asphalt index and all these projects are going to be the same? You know, they get it based on the current bid index at the time of the bid. But then when the asphalt is actually placed, it's, it's the roll of the dice. If it's higher, you, you pay more, or if it's lower, you pay less.
So all, all, all asphalt index risk is on the part of the curdser?
Typically, yes. Same, but, well, now, you can say to them, hey, you, you have to lock this in, okay? But they're, they're gonna charge, they're, they're, you're gonna automatically have to work that long.
What about enough to exceed bid?
Um, I think we'll have less bidders bid is what it will come down to. There's only a couple of players, you know, we're talking about a handful, you know, six or less, that really would probably tackle something like this. And I can tell you, all of them are already booked out through the end of, of October, you know what I mean, so.
And what about cancellation of, of, of a bid that we've accepted? So let's say we jump a bid, and we have an index, and we see that the index is moving in the wrong direction for us. When do we cancel or defer that work without penalty or with reason?
So, it's a tricky one, um, you know, as soon as we sign a contract, the contractor would engage their bonding agency and they would, they would have costs. So if we were sitting around kind of waiting, you know, most times I think they would work with us, but at the same time, this only changes on a monthly basis, you know, we're gonna get ourselves into a situation as they push the work out, they're gonna, they're never want us to, to do it or, or, or be down in the area or something like that.
So the, the timeframe that you're showing us is relatively short in terms of historical.
Right.
Yeah, so if we were to live it three years prior to this, where would we see that index?
So there, it ranges anywhere from like January 2018, it was 412. It got as low as three in the threes, you know, in 2020, it fell around 400. Um, but then it just started to slowly creep up in terms of, uh, that cost.
You don't have to set a, in another format, do you, you don't have it in a, a chart or?
Well, it means we can see the slope. Oh, um, I might think it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know you can do it, but if you don't have it already, that...
I, I think it's on the PA asphalt website, actually, so.
I mean, it seems as though there was a, a fairly mild slope and it stepped up significantly recently. Is that your, is that because of petroleum price, is it?
Exactly, it, it's all funded off, you know, paving is two things, it's by two minutes, which is obviously an asphalt product, and a lot of diesel fuel are run milling machines and there is a difference. So, you know, that is directly affected by what you see with the asphalt. Okay.
And we're very likely going to see it come down a lot slower than it went up.
Absolutely. And probably not go back to that much, yeah.
I heard you say that they're booked out into October at this point in the year?
I'm sorry?
Most of them are booked out to October, any...
The conversation, the informal conversations I've had with at least three of them are, yeah, everybody's got enough work for, we're well beyond that even, so. And that, that, that I don't think we're gonna solve. I mean, that's gonna be in the next year, and you talk about harbor funding, available monies like that. I don't think that's gonna go away, so. But at least I think we stand a better chance to be kind of up front, in line at the beginning part of next year than we do being at the end of this year. And we also run the risk of bidding it this year, and you know, if the weather turns early, which it never, it hasn't in the last couple of years, all of a sudden that becomes problematic, um, just in the sense of, uh, you know, it, it, it frankly gives a worse job, you know, than, um, than if it were a war around to do it, so.
So we've not done this before, is it possible to, for us to calculate a price and give you a go when it hits that price so that you're not waiting for us to meet again to approve a go?
Well, the only problem with that, though, I'm understanding you, is that we're gonna pay the price at the time of work finishes. Right, so it's basically, are we still just estimating on the movement of the index?
Yeah, trends would be, trends would be, if we're at 700 and some right now and it drops to X dollars, we can live with X dollars. Theoretically, the trend would continue down, and so we would say go, when it hits this number, we're gambling about... We're gambling at whatever point we're going.
If it's...
We're not the way the tree is supposed to be in the other year, you know?
It, it's not that reactive, I mean, it's not like the, you know, bond stocks. And I think that what, what we would do is prepare the documents, have them ready to go, you know, with the intent to try to bid it at the end of the season. If for some reason we see something change, there's that gap in there that nothing happens anyway. So it's not like, you know, by moving a month or two, you're not losing, um, that, that scenario, so. Yeah, but if we get it out in February, you know, next year is probably the latest one, we...
I think if we have the documents ready to go, then we can pull the trigger quickly. Is that a sign that we're gonna get this work done and achieved?
Okay. So when it comes to the point where we're going to actually make a decision on what? When I say we, we're gonna make a decision on what is actually going to be paid?
Yeah, I'm gonna do some direction, I mean, obviously, we pick what we think, and, and I can certainly, I have a lot, you know what I mean? I can provide that to council. Um, I think what we'd actually do is go out and paint it. Uh, everybody will see it then, you know what I mean, what we're planning on doing, and, um, but we don't do that too, too, too early because we wanna leave those markers in place for the contractor to, a little bit. Um, you know, sometimes we would do that and we had to get the visuals to what...
Well, that's gonna partially depend on the, on the index, right?
Right.
Because it will be percentage work able to be completed, right? So how, how do you normally do that? Do you, do you do an A, B, C? What we do with stages, if we have money, we do A, B, and then...
Yeah, and then with the time of bid, like, look, you know, we, we have this kind of, uh, you know, broken into these three categories, so we would take the highest, uh, you know, two-thirds or whatever the number is to get to our, our bid price or our, what we want to spend. Um, and you gotta keep in mind too, you know, it's not like we, no, as soon as we start opening these areas up, it's a little less risk because we're kind of going all with the assumption that, um, that these are already shot and we're gonna do the most we have to do, but as soon as you open these things up, sometimes you have to dig down more and do some remediation, all this other good, so, so quite a little bit of money in it, in the public.
That's what I was gonna ask you. So if we, if we can't cancel, most probably defer the work, most probably contract because of penalties of what might incur, and you do run it down in proceedings, you're saying that you just keep it reserved?
We're gonna do less work, so that's... Let me, let me, if I'm under 100, we can do that.
Okay, so the contract is gonna be fulfilled by the dollars conveyed rather than the, the, uh, number of feet that we do in terms of payment?
Not exactly, but there, there's a limit on how far we can go. But, look again, I think it, from a, from a contracting perspective, if we, if we say we're gonna spend 1.4 million dollars and we get the 1.4 million dollars, you know, I don't think any contractor is really gonna fight us. They could if we got, if the quantity's got so far out of whack that it really impacted their production. Are we gonna do a milling one foot by one foot there, so that's not how that is supposed to work, you know what I mean? Then we're gonna have to move it now.
So I think as you were saying, the system has some flexibility in it so that the players stay happy and stuff like that.
Exactly, yeah.
But from a contract perspective, we're locked is what we...
So in, in simplistic terms, if we were to typically contract for, I'll make up a number, paving, um, 1,000 feet of market street. And that would have, um, unit pricing for the, the volume of, of the materials that would go into that. So when they started to dig up market street to repave it and they discovered that they needed to replace substrate or whatever the proper term is, um, that was not anticipated, that would be a change order that would be approved and that would be part of, part of the contract. And then through the change order process, working with the contractor, we would say, okay, instead of paving 1,000 feet, we're gonna pay 800 feet.
So then negotiate it.
Exactly, and you would change the order, which was then...
Okay, exactly, I understand.
So it's, it's working, it's, it's important to maintain a, a working relationship with contractor upfront. And most contractors, it would be reputable contractors, would be flexible to that process.
As we did at a little bit three years ago, you know, the whole one side of it, as soon as we opened it up, was, was garbage. You know, I think we spent another $200,000 fixing that until we ended up actually skating the job a little bit, um, you know, just trying to keep the, keep the dollars in progress.
And you're the negotiator for that process?
Well, and a lot of what we do is we'll be, we'll be under the prices in the contracts. We, we have the prices, you know, we locked in the contract, for good or for bad, and they, they work both ways, whether it be a credit or, or an Adam can be able to say, look, so if we just say we're taking 10 feet off, we have a unit price to be able to, to take it out. Um, but if it's something unproceeding or we don't have a unit price, we actually have to negotiate.
Are, are those unit prices based on the index as well?
Uh, if they involve asphalt, it would be...
Okay, so we're still stuck to paying, you know, the regular...
Yeah, only if they say we place 900 tons of asphalt, brickwood asphalt, it's not actual asphalt material, that's what this number represents, there's a very simple calculation to figure out what the overage was.
Thank you.
And just one more question. The number is ti, is it time to volume? So if we did more, would that number come down?
As you say, the number, what number is the...
Uh, your, your cost that went to 700.
No, it's proportional to the amount of work you're doing.
So if we did $3 million worth of work, would that number...
No, no, yeah, because you're spending, you know, twice as much as actual, or, you know, twice as much time, so, yeah. Was not for that now. For like the actual execution of the work there is, you know what I mean? If I'm going to build a favorable road, it actually costs less to pave the whole road on a unit price basis.
Correct.
In that particular scenario, so. So if you said it would be a better deal to pave every street than burning right now, it would be if they, uh, enter.
If we had seven million dollars.
Right.
What made it, you know, like?
Maybe it could be. And give you a clue, bud.
Do you feel so good? Any questions? You're right. Okay, so there are no more streets sweeping. Thank you. What is this, uh, you're talking about, street sweeping?
Uh, the prices come in for the one company, the one company out of Columbia. Um, they're they're astronomical as far as what the price goes and that doesn't include, it's a hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty-one dollars an hour for the street sweeper. That does not include the driver at seventy-two dollars an hour. So, uh, but as far as for, as far as for Jubilee Day, we do have a street sweeper lined up. Um, Vortech is going to come over with a demo for one of the sweepers that they've actually presented to us two or three times. Uh, and they actually demoed it at the sewer, at the sewer plant on the compost site at one time before. They're they're going to come over, they're going to provide the drivers. Um, all we have to do is give them a dump spot, so, and we have that already. So they're going to clean up after Jubilee Day, um, if anybody wants to come down and see it. Uh, it's what Camp Hill bought, um, to use. And it's it's a decent little machine, um, I drove it, it's a nice machine, so come down and take a look at it, uh, see what you think. And we'll proceed from there. But at this point in time, uh, until I get a proposal back from another company, I have really nothing to present to council for our street sweep. Because I, we can't bid one bid, so.
And so how many proposals do you?
I said I'll turn for proposals, but I got one back. And that was Evercore that we spoke to before out of Columbia. Uh, they just bought a street sweeping firm out of Carlisle, um, and their prices are pretty, it's pretty, pretty extravagant, so. Uh, but they would station a a machine. The plan was they would station a machine in Carlisle instead of traveling to, I think it was York or Baltimore, where it was the last one they came from. So, and uh, they would do the routes, they would do, we would set up how we wanted the streets swept. Uh, we would adjust the ordinance per se and then go from there, but um, that's a lot of money.
Do you have options to expedite getting the proposals back or new proposals?
I can try to get up, send out levers. So without having something in writing as to where they want to go and how much time we want them to spend, that's, it's kind of difficult, trying to get them to put a price on it is very difficult.
What is, what is holding it up, you're giving them that information?
What do you want swept and when do you want it swept?
What recommendation have you made to council?
We have signed up. I mean, would, do we want to maintain that or how do we want to go from there?
So what, uh, I, it's been so long, I know, and there's one in front of my house, but what what is the sign, sign to say, the first two thing?
I think so. I'd I'd have to look and see exactly what the ordinance is.
Is it once a month, is it a weekly?
It's weekly.
Okay.
From uh, April first, September.
So do you think that we need weekly street sweeping or are you thinking monthly?
If you're going for aesthetic purposes, I mean, weekly would be nice. There's been talk, I mean, council's thrown around a couple of different ideas, um, monthly, quarterly, beginning of season, end of season. Um, how do you want to, how do you want to proceed with this?
What council are you referring to? I don't recall us having that level of detailed con- conversation. I do recall us asking you about the frequency and you kind of just flip it the signs. And we had to change the signs, we wanted to change the rules, and you didn't seem very positive about that. What recommendation, even doing this a long time, what recommendation do you have for frequency to accomplish cleaning the streets?
Weekly would be fine, but you're, that's going to, that's going to, it depends on what you're wanting, willing to pay to have it done.
Is that only for sign areas or for that, is that?
That would be for sign areas, yeah. Because if we don't have it signed, it wouldn't be, you know, um, we could pull the signs down. We could do a goodwill, put signs up the night before and say, street sweeping this day?
But, and I'll tell you, it's, you don't have a schedule that people don't know about, they do not move their cars. And so it does not work. We have to have a schedule if we are going to street sweep and have to decide what to do.
Do we have a line item, a budget of line items for this, Amy?
We do, yes, and I mean, this year we had the, the line item is in there for the purchase of the machine. So I can reallocate that money out of that line item into however we decide to do this contract services or whatever.
So we don't analysis of what that budget would now would translate into the start's frequency, at least for this budget year?
Okay, I can, that's, I have, I have not done it, but I can work that. If that's how you want to look at it.
Well, I'm suggesting as well, I'm sure, because it would be helpful and so we could know.
Okay.
I don't think that in the budget, we had a quarter lease.
Wait for the lease?
Not the first.
Not, well, it would be the lease price for this year, you have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think is what it was.
Okay, yeah.
So is it fair to say that that lease price would exceed the amount we do to pay in rental of the equipment and payment to the driver in a year? No one would, no one would pay for rental service basically, uh, if they could do the same through the lease payment, right? Was that not fair? So the lease, the amount that we have in the budget for for leasing the unit, it makes sense to me, you should exceed the amount that it would cost to contract the services out. Otherwise, why would you contract the services out? Right?
I think I understand what you're, I think I understand what you're saying.
So the money would be in the budget theoretically. So you, how much is in the budget currently for the lease?
About a hundred and eighty-six thousand, I think is what we got.
Would you anticipate that renting the services would exceed a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in the season?
I think what the man was saying is it depends on how often you.
It depends, yeah, I think, well, that, that's what, that's what Councilman O'Neill had said, is using that number as you justify what, the frequency that you want to use it. So, and at least with that, I can give a, that, I, we can do that, yes. So we may have to adjust some signage, but um, or at least find some way to communicate with people. But I agree with with Councilperson Egerton that it is, if you don't have a known schedule, it makes it very difficult.
Take the schedule.
Plus, it also makes it very difficult and chief to enforce that.
Right.
So.
I wonder if our conversation, that we have to change the ordinance if we change the current posted schedule?
Well, if we're going to enforce it, yes, we would have to change the ordinance.
The signs would have to be changed.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when we had it before, they did not fit to the schedules, there was no enforcement, therefore no one moved their cars. So there were only like some areas perhaps left properly. But I do believe when you have a schedule and probably update the ordinance, we're going to have it, it's not enforceable.
I agree.
Okay, I can work some numbers, figure out some frequency and go from there, but uh, and then we can see where we're going to go. I'll see what I can do about getting more bids back in.
Well, we've got.
There's not a lot of people that that do this.
Okay.
So that's a, that was what we ran into with the authority, too.
The contractor service.
Yeah.
That's my timer, too.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, like, if you, if you don't have anything to send out to get bid, how did you get the threes to happen?
We asked them what it would cost to do so many curb miles so many times a week or so many times a month. That's how we did that.
And did you base it on the current ordinance?
Yep. We, when we were looking for, through the authority, the authority wanted to, wanted to be swept, the entire, all the streets had to be swept twice a month. All right, so there's fifty-seven curb miles of streets in the Vermont campers, including state roads. So we knew how much, how much time they were going to spend in town doing this. The company that we contracted with at that time had, said they could get it done in three, three and a half days. So they knew what they were dealing with. It was thirty-five hundred dollars a sweep, which they considered those three days thirty-five, thirty-three hundred, I forget what it was, exact amount. But it was really in the thirty-three, thirty-four hundred dollars a month range is what they charged us. So that's, that's what we were basing the amount of time it took them to do that. Now, the sign areas in town are not near the entire town. So there's, there are certain areas in town that are not going to be swept on a regular basis. Like, what street, my street gets swept, I think, twice all summer long, whenever we're running on a regular schedule.
So to use it thirty-five hundred per month?
It was thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five, thirty-five hundred per sweep, so it was about seven thousand.
Seven thousand per month, but how many months in the season?
That was in ours, in the season we have now, yeah, six, five.
Actually, that one ran.
Twelve months.
Three years.
So that's not anywhere near a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So I don't know how, how, why this matters so complicated. It seems pretty simple. You still, you already have the information you need to get pitched. I mean, you just have to do it.
Right.
So I'm not sure why we only have three bids. I'm not sure.
It's really funny, nobody wants to do a burrow. It's too tight, it's too, it's too narrow, it's, there's complications that's involved with the burrow, so.
We have to do a formal bid process.
No, it's not why, I went out and got quotes as to what it costs, yes.
Okay, um, so do you have any other suggestions or questions from the manager? Well, speaking, personal? Next up is the public safety coordinator, Chief Grant.
Yeah, that's a good one, but late today, it would have been used, you know.
Any highlights? Thank you, okay, it's good. I'm aware of this position, Tom, outside of National Weather Service, all right. Uh, Chief, yeah, I've seen my book, it's really well. Um, and suppose highlights, maybe a couple of it. One, uh, we thought was, it was good being out in the community within the last month or two. A couple of the things that probably partners there were. Well, was, you know, felt in a shame, very concerned that it was water and grass on the square. It was a joy to be able to do that and be part of that and make that a successful project. Probably the parallel of that was the week before, I don't know, when we were at a sit fire and pumping, putting water in the pool. You know, maybe it was for several, we made a little warmer this year, so that was a joy. Um, one of the other things that we did there, we stopped on the C H, was, had a little bit of redundancy. We had a reserve pump that is portable, that's pretty good size. And we gave that a bunch of racks to be able to work from. Sometimes when they have downtime in the chlorine tanks, right there underneath the for grating in the pool. So they have to, if that pump goes out, they usually have to go to the authority or wherever to get the, get a pump that is only one system that they could use. So we had one of those by the new from several years ago. And so we got the hose and the same way up with that, so try to keep the pool operable. If by chance that pump goes bad, making it circulate with the other, so, that's all I have. Thank you. You have some work?
Uh, I assume that I read the report, but I don't hit the highlights. Uh, I joke to people that the reason that this position exists is for the event that happened ten days from now, which is Jubilee Day. Uh, so that's the most of my work. Uh, the event action plan is done as well as to have this weather plan filed with the N S Weather Service. Uh, we will receive decision support services from the National Weather Service. Uh, we're requesting all services from them except for them actually sending somebody down here during the day. I figure at the degree meteorologists, they should be able to handle that pretty well. Um, so, so we'll be in touch with them in case there's any threat of severe weather or extreme heat during the day. Uh, Penn State Health, Penn State Health Life Land, you know, that's also completed their emergency action plan for Jubilee Day. I just received that today and it looks very similar to previous years doing most of the things that they've done previously. If you want to mention something that was discussed earlier, and maybe this is a political point for the Broad Street part project, that is actually on the county hazard mitigation plan. So if you go to the county and say, hey, you want to make your hazard mitigation plan look like it's being completed? We don't put you under the project and we're asking for funding for it. Uh, so that may be one happening there. Uh, turning to COVID nineteen, uh, transmission has been leveling Cumberland County, which has moved it has been since CDC has been done tracking the county level transmission. Cases are, of course, off in Pennsylvania, uh, we're seeing about four thousand new cases a day. They seem to have plateaued in most other states over forty and the cases are starting to decrease. Uh, so the Pennsylvania Department of Health certainly hopes that that is the case in Pennsylvania as well. That's what I have, nothing, anything, questions?
Thank you. Now, uh, over the discussion, uh, it sounds, uh, um, really on top of the ministry and Engineer Dowsky, if you have, uh, something to contribute?
Yes, sir. So, um, Chief has provided me with the action reports in terms of the last five years of data. Um, you know, a couple, a little history in terms of this particular intersection. Uh, you know, that was one of the intersections studied during the Legacy Park project. And that was, of course, I don't know, eight years ago, something like that. Um, you know, and that was at the time close to meeting traffic signals warrants. Um, but it hadn't met those at that point in time. Now, of course, COVID kind of messed up all the, you know, typical projection data, but at the same time, you know, it it was something that we knew that at some point in time was going to become, you know, meeting those particular warrants. Um, as the government indicated, there's also different work processes, you're well aware, for a four-way stop, you know, they're they're very similar, but but different. Um, and they are complicated because, uh, two legs, well, both both ways of market street, as well as one leg of marble are all state roads and then the opposite side of the street is Burrow Street. So it's a little bit of a weird scenario where Penn dot had jurisdiction on three or four legs of the intersection. Um, you know, your options, you, several options. Um, you know, with it being a a Penn dot intersection, you know, a lot of municipalities are stronger with this concept of spending borough money on a Penn dot intersection, frankly. So, I mean, that's something that Borough would have, or Borough Council would have to think about. Um, and then, you know, a study could be done or audit essentially of the intersection as well as, uh, take current traffic counts to be able to determine, you know, if those warrants have been met or if there's any other safety improvements. And those safety improvements can include traffic calling, um, scenarios that would, you know, slow people down. Um, I I wouldn't necessarily disagree with any of those, you know, in terms of of what the particular issue is or or how it comes about, so. Um, but once again, it all falls back to, it, they're Penn dot streets. You know, the improvements to that intersection are hundreds of thousands of dollars. Uh, so, you know, how does that end up ultimately being funded? Um, do we get on the list, uh, in terms of, you know, Penn dot addressing the issue? I know Roger's been in contact with the traffic unit district date about that, but that'll be a slow, slow, slow process, um, to be able to have addressed. Um, it probably about, um, I had our guys look at about twelve thousand dollars to do do a study and and try to maybe gather all the current information. One issue that does present itself is obviously schools over or becoming close to being over. Um, you know, to be real, we probably want a way to count it until September, um, to get the full picture of what's going on. See if that really does influence some of it. Um, it it does appear that there's a lot of stop sign violations in these reports, so, um, that's just me paging through a radio today. That's what I have, you know, once again, a little bit of, uh, everybody asking, what can we do? You know, and and aside from contacting, contacting Penn dot, you know, and and trying to garner the support of of the legislature to try to get some something done on that side of the house, you also have the potential of doing this study to determine if warrants are met. That's only going to tell you what needs to be done, not necessarily, um, you know, how to fund that, obviously. And then, of course, uh, you know, enforcement or some type of speed trailer or something like that is all right.
Two questions. Do we have access to a speed trailer? Do we have one, do we re- lease one, rent one?
The Borough Manager and I have been talking about some new, um, speed portal ones that show your speed. And if you're over the speed limit, it flashes red and blue to get your attention that you're going over the speed limit. So we'll be looking into those, I actually saw someone else at them nearby. So they're really nice and they're also something that we could write on the sign. It doesn't have to be speed so for looking for a kid or something like that, you could put it on the sign. So it's a very, but it's costing, you know, I don't have a budget for for this year. So we were talking about seeing if we could, you know, swing by, because we don't think for each side of the.
Keep it as possible.
Yeah.
How costly?
Pardon?
How costly?
Uh, do you remember?
The one was, the one that we looked at that was changeable was, I think it was around three grand.
Yeah, the changeable one.
The changeable one goes up a little bit because it's programmable and.
But not much more than that, I think it's silver tower.
Yep.
Um, and it can be moved anywhere, like in the, in the school zones, once the first starts and then take it anywhere you want.
I thought you were going to say a lot.
I mean, being public safety oriented, we could potentially look at our funds for that and trying to keep with our theme of using the, the public safety.
Borrow money?
Yeah, our government expenditure.
Yeah, yeah. What, I mean, please forgive me, a three thousand dollars, you're talking about one point five. about one point five million dollars in paving, that, that's a lot, but the question I would have is effectiveness in real life use. And obviously, when the first goes up, I think it tends to get a lot of attention, but want people to look through that?
Well, I mean, we also need to get a new traffic counter, it records the speed. Um, ours is not being supported anymore, but that company that run our business. Um, so we have to get a new traffic counter, or we can take it and put it up there, well, that's kind of true, but we can put it on our side of Marble Street, and see what kind of traffic we're getting from there, and speeds from there. Um, so, we've done, unfortunately, that thing has, has just stopped working because of competition.
Chief, you don't educate me, Chief, because I'm just, I'm just not understanding this clearly. So, it's a three-way Penn Dot controlled intersection, a one-way borough controlled intersection, and the suggestion is to put the traffic counter and speed, speed recorder, if you will, on the leg of Marble Street that the borough controls, but that would, I would think be the less traffic area in that particular intersection, so what good would that even do?
Right, we can put some on Penn Dot roads, see where...
Yeah, I believe we can.
We could? And, so, I mean, to what end? Because again, educating, please.
Well, just to see what, how much traffic we have gone through there, and what's, what gives you an average speed.
So, we have the metrics, and then what do we do with those metrics?
We base enforcement off of that.
Okay, so then, then police would be assigned in a reasonable way, based on the metrics that were gathered. I'm trying to, do, do you have any...
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile looking at getting a new one of those for you, and a, a speed sign, whichever one you think is...
Two, two.
Two vertical speed signs.
Yeah, I can reset your all informations, you can look at it.
And the, the cost of a traffic counter would be approximately?
I have no clue.
I don't, sorry.
I don't think it's gonna be, it's, it's use, we would use that a lot.
I mean, three thousand, six thousand.
Someone probably would use those two numbers.
Okay. It does look like that, there's two written, either there's like a, your speed is a flash is like, as low as three grand, and then like a trailer with all the goodies is like, ten grand or twelve grand, so, you know, that, the three grand is up to climb all over, just from, this is what Google is telling me right now.
So, did you think with that, that it was true, like, whether that just raised the awareness for the drivers going through that, at that moment?
Well, yeah, you're gonna get the, you're gonna get the ones that are gonna actually comply, can fly, anybody, they're probably already aware of how fast they're going, but that'll at least give us an idea, you know, if it, if it doesn't work, then...
I think people slow down when they know they're being watched.
Because we're, 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 we're taking curiosities and licenses, right?
People, they do slow down on North London Street.
Yes, yeah.
And that was a, a well-known area where people, where the police have been cursed in the past, and so, especially when they're better than you.
Yeah, enforcement.
But enforcement simplifies the fact that people slow down, you know, that there's enforcement there, and people do slow down.
So, the speed signs in the nearby community that you referred to, and they seem to be effective, I'm not sure if your colleagues in another municipality agree, but I, I've found them to be effective closely.
I can bring my brakes, though. I have a question. Can we talk about the signs, that there's awful other traffic calming techniques that we can use? Is there any other recommendations that we could put in that area that would help slow the traffic?
Yes, uh, for a record, I said before, you know, it's not the, it's not the signs, it don't do the business, it's actually the physical geometry, so, you know, it would be pitching that area in some form, so, you can look at the reconstruction of the intersection, you know, they call them bump outs and things like that, that intersection's already kind of, it already has that a little bit by default just because of its geometry, but, you know, it appears, and once again, I just looked at these, you know, today, just looking through, you know, a lot of people are like, report the stop sign, let me left, right, I'm gonna go, and then they get hit. So, that most likely is a speed issue on Market Street, um, you know, that can be somewhat controlled, and then some type of what they call con stikini, you know, making those stop signs here and there, and people get in here, and those kinds of things, really in-your-face kind of signage, um, to at least get that person to stop, to stop sign, then think twice about, um, just, just kind of drift it through.
Could we get a list of all of those options reasonably?
Oh, absolutely.
Take that, assess it, and then move it forward?
I mean, they have...
I think all these are great ideas.
I've seen like little signs that go underneath the stop signs, does like, look twice, or, you know?
Well, but it's the speed issue that we heard about.
It's getting things like, you know, the visibility in the road, it slows people down, like signs, like, can we put the, something in the road?
Yeah, we talked about a year ago on Main Street, it was, you know, doing some type of temp, or no, I'm sorry, it was on Main, it's one of the side streets of doing a temporary high pedestrian, uh, refuge island, they call them, you know what I mean, just with, 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 um, posts, uh, with flexible delineators, you know, to see what that does, and that pitches the road down enough that people do the same reaction, they jerk and, and at least take to fill up the gas, um, you know, maybe cover the brake kind of thing, but that at least would, would be a trial to see, you know, if that does have any real impact on the speed. Um, if you make it super tight, you know, people don't go as fast on Main Street because there's cars there, you know, so, um, it's just the reality of what I feel as a driver, uh, what I can kind of get away with is really what comes out.
I think we had another citizen mention that the, um, crosswalks are faded, if you brighten up that intersection, we are, what's the plan?
We are working on that, that is.
What's the goal?
The goal is to have it done before the end of summer, uh, start working in the center of town out.
Could that be a priority? Can we make...
Sure, I'd do it, so.
I'm asking, how, how could we make that a priority? Are there any further questions?
I know it's a lot there, I'm just asking, um... I can stop them from filling bottles, and we can fill them on paint and roads. I mean, it, it, there's only so much that can be done in a day, I mean...
No, I clearly understand that, I'm just asking, is there a way for us to help to assess how to prioritize that?
What we got, the plan we got is to start in the middle of town, start working where the most, where the walkers are at, and work our way out towards the residential side.
So, so that's, that's the plan?
That's, that's, yep.
So, might have the new information or...
There's others, there's another thing I'd like to add to this, that, and I spoke to Scott Frazier, the township manager in Upper Allen, last week. Um, him and I had a conversation about a, a lot of things, but one of the things that they're looking at doing is a study of Market Street from the borough line out to fifteen. I spoke to him at Stewart Greenlight Go Grant, great, um, about potentially adding our light onto that, going from Main Street out to fifteen. Um, they're looking at syncing the lights, making sure that the traffic flows the way it's supposed to, um, pedestrian safety because they're getting more and more, and if you've ever noticed, there's no sidewalks out there around the sheets, but they all have pedestrian lights, they all have pedestrian crosswalks, you know, um, even kind of the, the truncated domes are installed because they have to be put in.
Put in, yeah.
So, with that being said, they want to do an entire thing. Scott is very much in favor of looking at an entire, um, strip. This would also go along with what we're looking at for our active transportation plan, um, for the green, for the, the, uh, Walker's Grant.
Yeah.
So...
I think that's very important.
There's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of things that tie together here, um, and a lot of moving parts that are going on at the same time, so, um...
Moving, that's, that's helpful.
Yep, so, I'll see where, we'll see where Scott wants to go with that, and what Engineer Rogowski can add to that question.
Roger mentioned Greenlight Go, yeah, Greenlight Go is a, a, pretty much a typical revolving funding mechanism. We have had success in the past, and that typically comes open in like October, um, you know, now, that definitely would be something that would, would fund a study or studies of that area specifically, whether it be for warrants or for safety improvements, those kinds of things, so that'd be something that you'd have to run it, and I would think he, if you particularly apply to Penn Dot roads, you'd be almost, I think, they guarantee you that you'd get enough money.
I hope you do that.
Yeah, I know.
I think that'd be a great project to work with Upper Allen to do the whole...
The core, yeah.
Unfortunately, I, I will tell you, that rumor study probably had a different ultimate goal, okay, and it's not about that intersection, so, it's gonna say, yeah, we should do all of these things, but it's probably gonna give you a great broad lift and not really look at that intersection like...
Specifically.
Yeah, but doing conjunctional makes more business.
The last question I have is to ask, and also any questions, is there any value or downside to somehow publicly advertising that that intersection is what to be a targeted enforcement area? I've seen those signs up in other areas, not even boroughs, but highways and byways.
I don't see any downside to it.
Okay, so can we consider that? Okay. Right, anyone from the committee?
No.
And then, and then the council, that's a question.
I'm listening, Chief, hey, Chief, I'm just curious, that they had suggested putting a car in a parking lot near the intersection, that they would leave a space open for that, is that a value? Is that, after a while, does it work right away, does it not work after a while? What's the, I don't know, if you've had experience?
The only experience I've had with it is, uh, in Florida, where they park unoccupied cars everywhere, but it doesn't take long for people to pick it upstairs.
I tell you, that's, that's, I mean, that's good, but I think...
That would, if we, if we could get out of there fast enough, we should, we can set a car there, um, like a, with a, a main car there.
Sure.
Um, but, yeah, I don't, I don't, the downside to putting a course somewhere is, now, I think one of these would just put there, but I wouldn't want to put one that has the firearms on, in it, or those stuff, because all it takes is one broken window for them to be able to check it out. It would have to be a A and B at bottom where it was closed, so...
Chief, what do you need to get started on replacement of your, of your, of your counter?
Um, I just have to get Sergeant Dyer, uh, I think he already has already commissioned that, so, and the other two, the other, the two signs, um, we haven't even spoke to a salesman about that, so...
I think Sergeant Dyer made a report to us back in February on public, on public safety, we, we should take a look at that.